Oh, none.
Good morning and welcome to Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, May 9th, 2006. We are here in City Hall in our City Council chambers in room 340, John Ferraro Council Chambers, as we are each Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. We are scheduled to meet here each Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., and we invite members of the public down to testify here on general public comment or on any items that have been agendized for public comment. We also have a facility in Van Nuys where folks can come and testify at City Hall in Van Nuys. Today, that remote facility is down, but we are working on fixing that. But usually, we have the capacity for folks who are driving in from San Fernando Valley or thereabouts to be able to testify via remote. We are broadcast live on Channel 35, L.A. City View, your city channel, and also webcast through the city's homepage at www.lacity.org, where there's a wealth of information about your elected officials and the city departments that affect you live. And also, we can be listened to on council phone by calling 213-621-CITY. And you can listen to the proceedings of the city council or any of our council committees. We are awaiting a quorum, which is two-thirds of 15 members or 10 members, and I want to thank the members that are here in a timely fashion pursuant to council rules. That's Councilmember Cardenas, Labange, Councilmember Padilla, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Wesson, with myself. That makes eight members. We are awaiting two more members, and if we don't have another two members in the next few minutes, we will adjourn. Councilmember Gruel, if you can make your way as soon as possible, Councilmember Hahn as soon as possible, Councilmember Perry is excused to arrive late, Councilmember Reyes as soon as possible, Councilmember Rosenthal is excused today, Councilmember Weiss, if you can make your way down as soon as possible, and Councilmember Zion is excused today. So with that, again, we'll wait a couple more minutes. If there's not a quorum, we'll adjourn. We have nine members. It is now 10:10. Councilmembers Gruel, Hahn, Reyes, if one of the three of you doesn't come down in the next minute, we will adjourn. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
All right. We begin each week's meeting with a salute to the flag. Since Mr. Labange was the first here and the first to stand up right now, it'd be honored if he would lead us in the salute to the flag, if I can ask everybody in the audience to please stand.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. I'd like to place our hand over the heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Labange. First order of business, Madam Clerk.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Weezer moves, and Mr. Padilla seconds. If there's no objection, those minutes will be unanimously approved. Next item?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weiss moves, Mr. Smith seconds. If there's no objection, those two are unanimously approved. Next items.
Mr. President, this is a time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay. Now it's time for public comment on items that are not on our agenda but are part of our jurisdiction. I'd like to ask Zuma Dogg to come forward first, be followed by Matt Dowd, and then Valinda Jo Wright, and we'll go from there.
All right. We don't got no time for no singing and dancing and silly jabber jabber. I wasn't able to make a living on Venice Beach this week because of an illegal ordinance, so all I had to do was sit on the internet and look at a whole bunch of legalese. I'm gonna read some stuff to City Council, y'all. I know Mr. Garcetti has a copy of it right here, y'all, and hopefully he'll distribute it to everybody. Here's some legalese, y'all. First of all, the privilege of a citizen of the United States to use the streets and parks for communication must not, and the guise of regulation be a bridge through tonight, y'all. And right now, I'm gonna read some things from the Ninth Circuit Court, y'all. The Ninth Circuit Court said that there was Harry Perry against the police, y'all, and it says the court has jurisdiction. We find 4215 facially unconstitutional. We reverse the judgment of the district court. That's the Ninth, y'all. This supersedes. I don't care what John Brady says, y'all. John Brady told me that the city runs the city, but the city don't run the First Amendment, y'all. And right now, how come Zuma Dogg is gonna be like Eric Brockovich right now and keep reading? Muslim said -- this is from New York City. New York City came up against the First Amendment Superior Court. Here's what they said. Muslims sell jewelry, incense, candles, and other items throughout the city without a license. This permission is entirely due to those items being considered protected expression under the First Amendment. That's from New York, and you can't tell me that if the -- why is New York listening to the First Amendment, but they're like, ain't y'all? Clearly, the city has no right to prevent artists from displaying their works and no practical benefit whatsoever achieved by allowing them to display and not sell them, y'all. There's no justification for allowing those with membership in a nonprofit organization to sell items and solicit donations while disallowing those with nonprofit memberships from the same activities, y'all, because I had the city attorney tell me you had to be a nonprofit organization. That shoots that one down right there, y'all. The statute -- here's the conclusion, y'all. The statute here is overbroad. Given the significant state issues of the city, the statute is unconstitutional on its face, y'all. It's unconstitutional on its face. It's overbroad. The federal ruled on it already, so if Harry Perry already won in an appeal with the Ninth Circuit Court, how come y'all preventing Zuma Dogg suspend 4215? Excuse me, President Garcetti, Zuma Dogg has proved the case now that I think 4215 needs to be overturned right now. It needs to be suspended while everyone looks over the paperwork, because unfortunately, my time is up, y'all. My final thought is that Zuma Dogg.
Thank you very much. Mr. Matt Dowd is our next speaker. Mr. Dowd.
Thank you very much. My name's Matt Dowd. I'm from Venice Beach. I'm gonna just translate what the Zuma Dogg just put forward. Basically, there's a federal ruling that allows the sale of expressive items anywhere. If you're expressing yourself, selling it is part of the process of creating, because with the money from the sale, you can then recreate more things and be further expressive. Now, they're saying in New York, Mayor Giuliani said their whole lottery process was unconstitutional. We have that paperwork. It's been submitted. You know, in effect, people want to go out and just create, make what they, you know, make their product, sell it. It's all federally protected. They say 4215 is unconstitutional. They never change 4215. I've got a couple of emails here from my people, my customers. Here's one. "I've been looking for your booth at Venice Beach but haven't been able to find it. Are you still selling the incense?" The incense, not incense. The incense, because they know I make one that's original, and that's where they find it. I gotta go to court tomorrow, LAX, to defend misdemeanor ticket for selling incense. I'm going in with my federal decree that says incense is constitutionally protected. I'd also just like to say, this could be my last time in City Hall, maybe Zuma Dogg as well. Anybody out there watching wants to come out of the rotunda and meet me and Zuma Dogg, we'll be there for the next thirty minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Our next speaker, Valinda Jo Wright.
Good morning. How are you guys this morning? Arthur Ashe, one of his quotes is, "True heroism is remarkably sober, very undramatic. It's not the urge to surpass all others at whatever cost, but the urge to serve others at whatever cost." Chicken run for Congress, West Indies confidential teacup, golf drinker, Bay shrimp flu. Illinois, Alia, West Indies, Bahamas, California, Bear Rock, Obama. I run for Congress. Illinois, back and forth, golf cup, tea time at Alcatraz, Bear Rock, Obama.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Noel Weiss.
President Garcetti, Mr. Garcetti, this one is for you. Okay, we're talking Silver Lake now with the same problem with the Ellis situation. And I gave the sergeant -- right, great. Basically, it looks as though we may have a loophole here that needs to get closed, which specifically relates to the class of tenant that exists when you have a small lot subdivision, and apparently, this developer's trying to walk between that -- into that loophole between the raindrops, where originally comes says he's gonna do a condo conversion. Those tenants, under the laws, I understand it, have the right to stay there until the track map is recorded. Well, the subdivision, Small Lot Subdivision Act, doesn't give them that right, and this guy is apparently trying to go into that loophole, and I think it's important that you give consideration to some kind of measure here to protect these people, because you're talking about an unfairness, basically, in terms of their situation. And the developer, I think, is trying to, again, game the system here. The city attorney isn't quite clear what to do. The planning department isn't quite clear what to do, and I think the appropriate direction from your office in terms of this is, if it looks and smells, it looks like it is a condo conversion, and to the extent that they're gonna try to use the subdivision, the Small Lot Subdivision Act to try to get around and Ellis Act these people, we gotta give consideration to amending that act to make the status of tenants in condo conversions consistent with the status of tenants in small lot subdivisions.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Weiss. We've actually been working very closely on this with the residents there, so thank you. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Michael Carrion.
Yes, my name is Michael Carrion. I'm from the 14th District, and I've got a few things. First of all, political posters are put all over our community. This is considered blight. Maybe not to you guys, because you're politicians and you guys put your own posters out. It is still blight. When you got 20 to 50 posters on a block. Hello, Mr. President. Can you see what I'm talking about? Or you're looking the other way, sir.
I'm looking right here at you.
You were writing, okay? This is blight. You guys have to do something about the blight in the community, not only when people are putting posters up because they want, but apparently, there's a double standard for politicians that put up blight. This city has two standards for everything. You guys either gotta get on the same track or don't cite anyone. Every time I call to remove these, it is like pulling teeth. Oh, well, there's a political process, and we can't do this because our opponent might get upset. Then take it off the books or correct the rules that you have on the books, except for politicians. They can do what they want. Make sure that we all, all us taxpayers, understand the way it goes, not that it's accepted by the city of Los Angeles that the rules only account to the citizens of Los Angeles and not the politicians. You're supposed to live in the same districts. Take this garbage off our telephone poles, city property, and highways, and everywhere else. This is garbage. It belongs only when people want to put it up on their own private property. Mr. Padilla, I'd like to say thank you. I've seen your community, and all of his posters are on private property and posted properly. Mr. Weezer, when you ran for office, you were the only one that didn't put yours on polls and everything else. I'd like to say thank you to those people.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carrion. That closes our public comment for today. Let's run through the agenda.
On the agenda, Mr. President, items one through four are items noticed for public hearing, and they are street lighting ordinances.
Okay. Those items, we'll open and close the public hearings. Anybody wishing to call those special? If not, let's open the roll on those, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. Next items?
Item number five is also a public hearing item, Little Tokyo BID, and for council's information, this is the initial hearing, and there is a final hearing on May 3rd.
Okay, let's call that special for two cards that we have.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items six through 11.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call items six through 11? Any of those ones special? Mr. Parks?
Technical correction on number six. That where they list a CD8 property on number one, it should be a CD9 property.
Okay. We'll correct CD8 to CD9. Anybody wishing to call those specials? Yeah, Mr. Reyes?
Continuance on number eight for one day.
Okay. Anybody object to a continuance for number eight? If not, that will be continued till tomorrow, the 10th of May. Any other specials, colleagues? Seeing none, let's open the roll with six as amended and minus eight, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items 12 through 21. 10 votes are required for consideration. Public hearings have not been held.
Okay. 12 through 21, colleagues, any specials? Seeing none, let's prepare the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President. There are cards on 12, 15, 18, and 20.
Okay, I'm sorry. So cards on 12, 15?
Yes, 18 and 20.
18 and 20 will be called those special. The others, let's open and close the public hearings, and let's prepare the roll on the balance and tabulate the votes.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. Next items?
Next item on the supplemental agenda is item number 22, and that is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call 22 special? If not, let's prepare the roll on the item and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Next items?
Items 23 and 24 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call those special? Mr. Weiss?
Sorry, which one?
23 for Mr. Weiss. Anybody wishing to call special? If not, let's open the roll on 24, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay. Next items?
And that would take council back to the items called special. First item called special was item number five, and that is for a card from the public.
Okay. Like to invite forward Wilson Liu at this time, to be followed by Ellen Endo. Welcome. You'll have two minutes. Thank you.
I will not take too much time. I'm Wilson Liu, and I'm a local business owner and a property owner in Little Tokyo. For the past two years, the business improvement district has shown a lot of positive things for our community. Today, you'll be voting on our third year of operations. I continue to lend my support on the positive things that the BID has done to our community, and I urge you to support us and to let us go for another three, our third year for yes on the renew. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Liu. Ms. Endo?
Good morning. I'm Ellen Endo, and I'm president of the Little Tokyo Business Association. I'm also managing editor of the Rofu Shimpou, the Japanese daily news, and I also am speaking in support of the bid. I've worked closely with the bid since its inception, and it's dramatically improved our community. We've been able to work closely with the Los Angeles Police Department. We've initiated a cleanup program and have done a lot to promote the area and keep the area clean and safe and vital. And we're also preparing for the arrival of new residents, which we think there'll be about 2,000 by the end of next year, and that significantly changes our district, but we hope it'll be a complement to what we already have in terms of our community. And I, again, I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much for both of your comments. That closes the public comments. Anybody wishing to be heard on that? If not, let's open the roll.
Mr. President, actually, no action is required on this one. This is just the hearing and then the final hearing.
So we'll keep that open. Thank you very much for your comments. They'll be noted, and we'll continue that forward. All right. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 12, and that was called special for a card from the public.
Okay. Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins, if you'd like to come forward on item number 12?
Good morning, everyone. My name's Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. Before making this dentist plan agreement and enforcement building code, we must be aware of why these dentists and cosmetologists' buildings are lacking customers. It is known now for the 20th century that my proper part of urine is what can heal any toothache, antique crackdown power as you use your urine, and using my minister cycle blood for any whitening of the teeths. No more dentists or healthcare cards are needed any longer for the 20th century of public people. Any gums or throat problems can be healed with your individual urine. No more is needed scope flaws or iron in the mouth of the teeths to keep them straight or clean. We are asking all public people, if your teeth fall out, don't throw them away. Use them for your food. Your teeths are worth billions of dollars even if they fall out. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hawkins. Anybody else in the council wishing to be heard on this? If not, let's open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay. Our next item is -- that is approved. Our next item is 15, and Sylvia Hawkins, did I come forward on that one, too?
Thank you again. Again, on number 15, as we come in terms of a new resolution of no taxes, and what is taxes for? All illegals and legals must know that there is no need to brag or pay taxes any longer. No more taxes of double taxes on full price. Then taxes hit again at the ending of bill costs. All convention centers, arenas, homeless shelters, hotels, mental wards, and business buildings must not be double taxed or doing any taxes or any trades with business and business outside the 58 states. The United States of America public people have suffered long enough with high-cost prices because of large businesses, fraud, fake trades, while small businesses is growing and are in more demand than ever. I am asking all business owners, if you have over eight businesses in different states, get ready to lose five businesses because of the local governments that is versus the United States. United States of America. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Madam Clerk, that item is now before us. You could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
That item has been approved. Next item?
Item number 18, called special for a card from the public.
Ms. Valinda Jo Wright. Valinda, item number 18.
I'm a U Baby Golden State, oh, Ted Watts, Ted Watts for Congress.
Thank you. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item?
Item number 20, called special for a card from the public.
We have two cards, Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins and Valinda Jo Wright. Ms. Hawkins?
Again, now maturing, as we begin to cut Medicare, Medicare benefits off of Social Security Administration and all business workers and owners, we must make all people responsible for their bet and sickness action. Starting less than two years from now, Senator Arianna and myself will be signing new agreements of $15 an hour, the beginning of minimum wages, $200 more for all whom are on Social Security income. No on any medication or drugs to all my brothers and sisters of the Kennedy family because of their wisdom and high IQ or brain power. If Mr. Kennedy has broke the law, judgment must follow, but no on any medication continuation. We are asking all wheelchair and cane disabled people to please use the regular MTA bus line for transportation as these benefits are now beginning to be cut. No longer do you have to feel isolated from the public people in any transportation dealing with separation from the public. Thank you very much. My name is Ms. Sylvia Hawkins.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Valinda Jo Wright, item number 20. It's regarding the senior health fair.
I sure hope we get a Democratic Congress in November. That's five, that's six months.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item?
Item number 23, called special by Councilmember Weiss.
Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Madam President. Now, this is an item where a similar item was 245 by this council a week or so ago, and my expectation is that the council is going to once again 245 this subsequent action of the DWP. My understanding, folks, of what happened here is that it's been at least 10 years since the DWP has raised the rates cable companies pay to attach their, themselves to city power poles. It's been at least 10 years. In the 10 years since, I expect that the cable industry has certainly raised rates on all of our constituents time and time again. And what the cable industry is saying, sato votoche, is that they intend to pass this proposal straight on to our constituents. I don't think that's fair, and so I'm going to vote no.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, this item is before us based on a technicality. Is that correct? Is this the same item?
Yes.
It's a 245, which we voted for previously.
There was a previous 240, I'm back, I'm back over here.
Sorry.
There was a previous 245 of an earlier DWP commission action, then at a subsequent DWP commission meeting, they agendized, in essence, a manner dealing with the same issue, took an action on that, and council members introduced a 245 on that. The first time it happened, Madam President, there was a question as to timeliness under Rule 23, and there was discussion and the disagreement from the city attorney as to whether that was a proper Rule 23. That type of issue is not before us today.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Madam President. On the merits of this matter, I've told the commission I tend to be sympathetic and want to make sure that we have an ironclad case so there aren't any Prop 218 issues. It was less the agendizing. I was told by the CLA, and maybe the CLA can come to table that was on this issue. I was confused about a second 245, since in our committee, we already talked about this once, but apparently, and I spoke to one commissioner, Commissioner Nahai, he said we hadn't voted on anything new. But my understanding from the CLA's office is there has been a second vote in the meantime. While Commissioner Patzouris came to committee, we all agreed we'd look at the actual basis to make sure that indeed this cost is a correct one, which I'm sympathetic to if it's there, but I just want to make sure we have our basis covered. Was there a second action that was taken? Is that why there's a 245 today? Hold on one second. Can we get that microphone on? No, just keep the same one. It's okay. Keep the same one.
It was presented as a clarification. I don't know if it was intended to be a second action, but it was agendized and voted on.
And so it would have had the same effect?
I believe you, there would have been some potential confusion about who owned the item.
I think that this is friendly, I mean, maybe it's not friendly, but I would think it would be a friendly 245 in that we actually had the commissioner, in this case, Commissioner Patzouris, in committee and an understanding that we would actually look at the basis for this increase. It was, everything that was presented then, and my understanding at the board, was it was just anecdotal, that we know it costs more, we're only charging 10 bucks. But I do think we have to show that for somebody to actually use these polls, that there is a fee associated with that. If there is, I'll be the first person in here to absolutely support that and to say, if we're only charging 10 bucks and it costs us 30 bucks or more, we should be charging that because the ratepayers of DWP shouldn't be subsidizing the poll costs of other utilities, cable companies in specific in this case. But I think that we 245ed it to be able to make sure we could make that connection first. There was an understanding on that, and then this one kind of snuck through. So I would ask for your support on this today, to be able to say in committee where we're already dealing with this in an open and transparent way, let's get that information out there and make sure that that is defendable in court so that we don't find ourselves back here because we rushed it a little too much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Seeing no one else on the speaker queue, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes, one no.
Thank you. That item's been approved. Next item?
Next item, Madam President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
And just for council's information, on the last item, on item number 23, part of that action was also after asserting jurisdiction to refer it to committee for further consideration.
Thank you.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused Tuesday, May 16th, to leave at 12:15 for personal business. That meets council policy.
That, he'll be excused.
Councilmember Padilla also requests to be excused Wednesday, August 9th, to arrive at 10:45 for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Padilla is excused.
Councilmember Labonge requests to be excused Wednesday, May 10th, to leave at 11:30 for ci-
Hey, Brandon? Brandon?
At 11:30 for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Reyes moves. Mr. Weston seconds.
Councilmember Weisar also requests to be excused Wednesday, May 10th, for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Padilla moves. Mr. Park seconds.
And Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Friday, May 12th, to leave at 12:30 for city business. That meets council policy.
Be excused.
And that clears the desk.
Do we have announcements today, colleagues? Any announcements? Yes. Mr. Reyes?
Counselor, I just wanted to rise and thank all of our community members who came out to the Grandin Salsa. We had hundreds and hundreds of folks, a lot of young people out in the riverways cleaning up. Friends of the Alley River did a great job coordinating, and I just want to thank them. I think incrementally, more and more people are realizing they actually have a real river in the city, and their gestures and their actions and their contributions are greatly appreciated. Just want to thank them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Appreciate that. Colleagues, any other announcements today? Any other announcements? Yes?
This big Sunday was an absolute giant success. Want to thank all those who were involved throughout the city, including our mayor, Mayor Vieragosa, and his staff, and the Board of Public Works, and all city departments. Started by a thought out of Temple, Israel, to do something on a Sunday. And David Levinson, who was a congregant there, created this idea about eight years ago. And I believe 31,000 Angelinos participated throughout the city of Los Angeles. It truly was a big, special Sunday. So I want to thank all those who were involved, thank the city departments, the mayor staff for their leadership, and all of the council staffs that helped on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. It was definitely a successful day. It's a very special day for all of us. Any other announcements, colleagues? If not, I'd ask you to rise for adjourning motions, please. Have them rise for adjourning motions. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Madam President. Members, I'd like us to adjourn today in memory of Mike Quals, who was a former newspaper editor, Vietnam veteran, and who served as communications director for my brother, former city attorney Jim Hahn. He died Sunday suddenly of an apparent brain hemorrhage. He was only 63. He worked as a political editor for the now-defunct Los Angeles Herald Examiner and as managing editor of the city news service. And he was remembered yesterday for his professionalism in all his jobs, as well as his easygoing manner and his wry humor. He was a graduate of University of Missouri School of Journalism, and he worked more than 20 years as a newsman in Los Angeles. When the Herald Examiner closed, Mike went to work for my brother, heading up his communications office for 16 years. After my brother was elected mayor, Mike moved over to the Board of Public Works, where he oversaw its public information office. Valerie Lynn Shaw, one of our commissioners, said he was a man of depth, quiet, but a hard worker. He survived by his wife, Deborah, and two daughters, and funeral arrangements are pending.
I need you to be all members. All members.
Thank you.
I'd like us also to adjourn-
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Reyes. I think we'd like to make a comment.
Yes, I just wanted to add, and I want to thank Councilor Hahn for adjourning in his memory. He worked diligently with my office, with Monica Valencia, and getting the word out about all the public meetings, coordinating with all the different jurisdictions, and all the press conferences, and the gentleman was just fantastic. We're going to miss him.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you. I also have, I have two more. I'd like us to adjourn in memory of Bob Schultz, who was a longtime resident of Harbor City. He worked for many years at Green Hills Memorial Park, and he was very involved in the Harbor City Harbor Gateway Chamber of Commerce, where he was given a lifetime membership on its Board of Directors in recognition of the many, many years of tireless service that he gave that Chamber of Commerce. He was also a longtime member of the Harbor City Lions Club, and he volunteered for years as a tutor at Harbor Elementary School. He received the Bronze Star for service to his country during World War II. Bob leaves behind his beloved wife, Linda, and two of his sons. The memorial service will be held tomorrow, Wednesday, at 11:00 a.m. at Green Hills. Bob really was one of those who was at every community meeting, always had something to say, kept all of us who were in political office accountable, and really, we will miss Bob's tireless service to the community that he lived in. I will also like us to adjourn in memory of Hildegard Cox, who passed away on April 30th. She was 76, and she was a longtime resident of San Pedro. Hildegard met her husband Wayne Taylor Cox while he was serving in the United States Army in Germany. She arrived in California in 1966, where she moved to San Pedro. And while her husband was in Vietnam, she began working at Alpine Village. From there, she worked for the American Red Cross until she retired. And at that point, she began her volunteer work with numerous organizations in San Pedro. And one of those was the Willembeck Special Education School. That was really probably her favorite volunteer work. That was really where she gave her heart and her soul until the end. She survived by her only son, Adrian Andy Cox, and his fiance, one grandson, and many, many close friends. We will all miss Hildegard.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Any other? Yes, Mr. Weisar?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Celia Noguera, known to many by her stage name of Linda Lopez. Linda passed away May 3rd, 2006, at the home of her beloved son, Michael Noguera, and daughter-in-law, Eugenia Noguera, in Eagle Rock, California. She was born in Apostle, Texas, on May 26, 1922, to Antonia Rodriguez and Vicente Barera Lopez, and was a 50-year resident of Glazo Park. Linda was best known locally for bringing live music to Columbo's Restaurant in Eagle Rock. She played in Italian, German, Welsh, French, Filipino, Mexican, Jewish, and American music. If you could hum the tune, she could play it. For the last eight years, her regular spot on stage every Friday and Saturday night at Columbo's maintained a huge following, and she welcomed open mic night for anyone who wanted to take center stage. Music was her life, and she learned to love singing from a very young age. She played professionally with her group Linda Lopez and her piano and orchestra, and traveled the entire country with performances at many locations, including the Coconut Grove here in Los Angeles, the Fairmount Hotel in San Francisco, Sina Grill Roosevelt Hotel in Hollywood, the Bellinese Room in Gableston, Texas, La Martineque in New York, and the Green Street Hotel in Pasadena, just to name a few. She is survived by her five children, Victor, Michael, who is very active in Eagle Rock, Picha, Yolanda, Charlie, and her five grandchildren, Priscilla, Ferrari, Angel, Danny, and Douglas, and her brother Ruben Lopez, and sister Evangelina Narabares, and several nieces, nephews, and cousins.
Can I hear a second, and I know some of them?
All members. Thank you. Any other? I have one, colleagues. Georgia Wilmouth, who passed away on May 4th, 2005. She was Sunland Tahunga's goodwill ambassador and community activist. She was born in Romania, and she raised her three children with husband Frank, moving west to Sunland Tahunga area where she resided. She was active and visible in the community and hosted a local TV program on, at Verdugo Hills High School for more than 17 years. She was active in a variety of civic organizations, the Kiwanis, the local foothills Republican Club, and so many more. She'll be best remembered for 4th of July, where she would depict and dress up like the Statue of Liberty and participate in the 4th of July parades. She was also well-known for making red, white, and blue beaded bracelets, as well as yarn bracelets in red, white, and blue. And I think I have at least 10 of them at home, which I will keep in her memory. But she sent over 3,000 of them to the families who were impacted after 9/11, to the fire department there in the city of New York. Georgia's passing is really a great loss to our community and our patriotism and desire to help others. Will be greatly missed in the Sunland Tahunga community, and ask that we adjourn in her memory. Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the roll. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.[1767.65]